Okay, before we start, I'd like to explain how the meeting will go. We will hold our public hearing on the budget first. The purpose of this public hearing is to review the community stakeholders, the opportunity to discuss with us issues and concerns regarding the proposed 2023 school budget. For those who wish to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call you up one by one. Much like public comment, you will state your name and town and have three minutes to make your statement and ask questions. It is different from public comment as board members, superintendent, and director of financial will be able to answer your questions and address your concerns. But again, this public hearing is solely to discuss the fiscal year 2023 budget. For the public comment portion of this meeting, which will be held later on, I want to remind you that public comment is not a discussion or debate between the community and the committee. It's your opportunity to express your opinion on issues of school committee business. And again, you must state your name, town, and have three minutes. We are not prepared nor allowed to directly respond to citizens' questions posed in the public comment forum. And as always, improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. You will be immediately removed from the meeting. That being said, I would like to acknowledge the numerous emails we received from parents regarding the mask vote. As always, we appreciate your views and take them into consideration when voting. What we do not appreciate is disgusting and extremely nasty tone that goes along with many of these emails. We are here voluntarily trying to do what we think is best for the district. We know everyone has a right to their own opinion and respect that. But the disrespectful and hateful emails we have received in the past 24 hours is a disgrace, and parents should be ashamed of themselves. I honestly feel bad for the kids. This meeting is our meeting, and as the chair, I can run the meeting however I see fit. And that includes altering the agenda, moving public comment, and limiting the number of speakers to accommodate a particularly aggressive agenda as per the policies of the Massachusetts School Committee of Lords. So with that, I'd like to open up the February 15 business meeting for Kentucky Regional School District. Will Calvo. Wayne Adams. Joanna Blanchard. Emily Dwyer. Louisa O'Ryan. Dick Hodges. Chris Martin. Ashley McLaughlin. Chris Redden. Deana Dragic. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So will.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Subcommittee updates. Finance Committee, Wayne.
Well said. We've signed tonight. We're all set for two weeks. Simon Morris.
Great, thank you. Emily, teaching, learning, accountability.
So we just had a meeting. Some minutes will be on the next consent agenda. But Mr. Conway sort of went over with us the OLA tier review. Basically, the district has to do a bunch of self-review, self-assessment in advance of submitting a bunch of documentation to the state. So that's mostly on Mr. Conway and Ms. Bernard, the ELL teacher. So I'm going to thank both of them in advance for doing that ton of work. And major data meetings happened over the past few weeks, and sounds like there was some really great data, mostly positive. And anything that was concerning, they problem solved as they've really gotten awesome at doing. Professional development, we went over some of the things that are going to be happening this Friday. Their professional development day, including the speaker, Michael Eaton, who's consulting with the district on culturally responsive practices. And finally, the report cards from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which came via email but are also linked via the W website. If anyone is really excited about that.
Thanks, Emily. Dick, policy.
Thank you, folks, this evening for passing LNH. We have one last policy E to kind of get the sandpaper out and smooth out whatever edges we need to. So I thank you in advance for that. And probably, I'm hoping by March 1st, but I'm not sure. But certainly within the next two meetings, we will be able to knock out all of the policies. We will be completely caught up. It's taken five years to do that, and it's been a long journey, but a worthwhile one. And it's a good feeling for those of us who have been part of the committee to get the policies up to date and get them in place and basically have policies that are good for our community and good for our school system. So I thank you in advance.
Thanks, Dick. Thanks for all of your work. It does not go unnoticed. Communications, do you have? Okay. Strategic plan?
We didn't meet this month, but a template for what's going out to the stakeholders of the objectives and the sub-objectives. So we got, the subcommittee took a lot in charge of the final. And the final product will be going out in probably a month.
Well, it's already about this week.
This week?
This week.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay, now I would like to open up the public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 budget. Yes.
Would it be possible for me to read what we've seen?
Please.
So just since we have people here, just an overview, we're talking about the budget. And I promised that I would try to get this done in about 10 to 15 minutes. I'll try to get this done in about 10 to 15 minutes. So just the budget. So the historical financial, over the last two meetings, this was a concept we introduced initially. And then last meeting, we looked at what the cost were. And today, I'm going to apply those just with how does it have to adapt on our children? So the first one historically, we looked at per people expenditure and net school spend. Communities that the state says we are similar to are these right here. We also know a family in dark districts, so these are the communities that identify as dark, or they're our neighbors. And here's our neighboring districts. Hayrow is not in here. Hayrow has budgets over $100 million. So we are not, they're completely different scope. So per people expenditure is all the money that comes into the school divided by the number of students. Except, what's excluded would be the money that gets paid to the building projects. So it's called debt expenditure. That is not included. And per people expenditure. So how does Kentucky match up? So we're using January, so last month's student population to calculate these numbers. And you can see, this is, when you look at these, there's a 13-year average. So this is the state, Kentucky versus the state. 13-year average, states, there are two per people expenditure, ours, five-year average, and fiscal year 20 average. So first, we go to 13-year average. We've been behind almost $1,500 per student, the state. If we were to fund at that level, we'd have an additional $3.3 million in our budget. For the five-year average, it got closer. 848 less, 1.9 million more total. And then it went up again in fiscal year 20. State's not a great example because there's communities that get plenty of federal funding. So it's not a wonderful example to use, but it's a comparison. We want to be consistent. So then you're still getting compared, not against all the schools in KPMV, but the schools in KPMV that are either our neighbors or are identified as being similar to us by the state. And you can see, 13-year, five-year, 20-year, fiscal year 20 average. Fiscal year 20 is used because it's the last year available to the state. So when you look at this, 13-year average, we were a million, I'm sorry, 1,000 behind per student, which equals 2.3 million. Five-year average increases a little bit, 2.6 million. Fiscal year 20 average got much worse. Over $4 million is the deficit that we didn't have. So if we were funding the average count, we'd have $4 million more in our budget issue. So if we just exclude all the count and only look at our neighbors, so here you're looking at Triton, Georgetown, Amesbury. Looking at our neighbor, Newburyport. You're looking at our four neighbors. So the 13-year average, we're close. Five-year average, we're close. And again, fiscal year 20, that gap grows. Net school spending, so this is a concept that, net school spending, municipalities pay 100%. So the numbers you're going to see, it's a required part. They have to pay it. 100% is a minimum. So if you pay less than 95%, you get penalties, and it makes it worse. You might as well just pay 100%. As a whole, just about everywhere in Massachusetts, they pay over 100%. So the percentages you'll see are the percentages over 100. So here, compared to the state, so this is a state average versus Kentucky. So Kentucky was 5.91% behind, 8.8% behind, and then 10% behind. And again, state, you could argue, I mean, I could argue with the state all day long, but that's not a comparison. It's not a great, these, however, are a bit different and a little bit worse. So the KPMV average, again, this is in all the schools in KPMV, because the only ones identified as the same as us are our neighbors. 11%, 17.4%, 27.14% behind Kentucky. And our neighboring districts, so we had four schools, Newburyport, Amesbury, Georgetown, Triton. Start off 8% behind, 16 and a quarter, 21 and a half% behind fiscal year 19. Just like per people expenditure, fiscal year 19 is the last year the state's posted the data for net school spending. So we do this what-if, and just when I do this, I want everyone to understand. I'm not proposing that we would fill this with all the people. But you understand the concept of a person and building. It's hard to understand, like, hey, we're going to have that, we're going to add 500 workbooks to this grade level. So it'd be a combination, but for just the sense of meaning of what that means, using $80,000, because it might be that you would hire a teacher, you might have hired a parent educator, you might have hired a custodian, a food worker, administrator, you could hire any, so $80,000, what would we use that? If we were funded fiscal year 20, at the state average, we'd have an additional 35 positions, almost 36. If we were funded at the fiscal year 20 KPMV average, we'd have an additional 51.6 positions. If we were funded at just our bordering districts, it'd be 35, 20. And again, that's just to conceptualize it. We would not just bring in 35, 20 positions. There's a lot that we could do to improve student achievement. So these are the two communities that were most, that were compared to the most. North Redding, who the state identifies as in the KPMV as being most similar to, and Triton, one of our neighbors, regional district. So if we funded the same as North Redding, it'd be 30 additional. And the same as Triton, it'd be 65 additional. So there's a gap. So this is a part that's new for all of us, who, I'm going to have to go on the computer here in a second because there's some action shots on this one. But is there correlation? I'm going to spend a little time on this right here. The red line on the bottom, this is, so you can see the gap to KPMV average, the net school spending. This is the gap I just was talking about, the net school spending. So 5%, 75, 6, 7, 8, it all starts at 11, to 16, to 17, 21, 24, the gap is increasing. Now, we have English Language Arts, the percentage of students who are proficient and above. And math, the percentage of students who are proficient and above. When the gap is closed, we're doing all right. And then all of a sudden, we start dropping down and dropping down. And we have a slight kick-off here in 2019. And there's a reason for that, as you all know. Because in 2018 and 19, we went ahead and made sure that there was a standardized curriculum inside of K8 schools for mathematics. And we also required that certain things be taught at certain times during the school day and that we use certain assessment methods in order to get data to improve our curriculum development. So someone could reasonably ask, is this something that could keep up going up? The answer is, no, not sure. Maybe, but not likely. I mean, you can, we have this conversation all the time. And when times are tough, you can do things for a year, you can do things for two years. If you ask someone to do it in perpetuity, they will burn out in a hurry. So here's some other, I think these are more, you know, so you're just going to have to go. This is our math scores. So just on this, you can see Kentucky's right here. This is 2017. Here's Kentucky, and here's the other KPMV schools that we talked about on that graph. So I need to move over. Let me go full screen on this. So it's the same image. There's four quadrants here. You have your X-axis is mean student growth. If you want to be a student growth, you want to be far to the right. That means you have a great student growth. And scale score is what you all accustomed to. So think of it, they're saying 400, 900, 400, 500. In your mind, you should think of that as, all right, it's a 0 to 100 score, and here's where people are continuing. So this is an optimal quadrant to begin. This is a less than optimal. So here's just a timeframe of what's happened each year. Here's 2007. Again, this is math. So there we are, bottom left-hand quadrant. Move to 2018. Remember, the gap has increased. We're still in the bottom left-hand quadrant. 2019, re-standardized curriculum. What happened? So that is a curriculum factor. The next year, 2020, doesn't exist. What happens in 2020? Yes, that's right, code. Code, so there was no testing. And then in 2020, 2021, it's every other day. And so watch what happens in 2021. Here we are, we're combined in there with Amesbury, Triton, right there, great quadrant. We're doing really well. Then we fall back, but we're back in the quadrant, but look at where everybody else is. So you're going to see, I'm going to play again, and it's going to show where we were in 2017 when we were in quadrant one. But there was a significant gap between us and the other districts. But I had play on this. That's where we were in 2017. All of these schools are performing far beyond. So in 19 and 21, did a great job catching up. So that impact on not putting money towards those areas where it needed math was particularly apparent. Now here's, hopefully this will play. Spinning wheel of death here. Okay. So this is the same grades. This is 3 through 8, English Language Arts. So we're going to start off, here's Kentucky, bottom left-hand corner. But let me just tell you, I think we should all be exhausted that we've now seen Kentucky in the bottom-left-hand corner compared to everything else, all the other school districts started in 2017. There we go, so Kentucky, bottom-left-hand corner, low growth and low scale score. 2018, we're moving. 2019, we've gone ahead and said, okay, need standards. Now, there's not a standardized curriculum, but there's standardized things that have to be done in terms of time. And then in 2020, we come back, but again, so too does everybody else. So we put in some functional practices that are best practices that will certainly give a bump. Are they going to continue to give a bump? Yeah, hard to say, unlikely, but it could be. The next one is just the 10th grade score. So there's only two scores in here, but it's, this is worth looking at. This is 10th grade. So it's only two scores because it's, there's the new test. It's not, the original test is no longer in place. But here's Kentucky, and this is, this is math. And you can see, Kentucky, we start off, by the way, in 2019. So this is high school, 10th grade. There's Kentucky, far on the right. Everybody else is up here. And then pandemic that hits everyone else, there's scale scores. So I want to explain this a little bit. So growth, exceptional, Kentucky in this, in 2019 is showing amazing growth, which should make sense because if they were performing so poorly in elementary, when they get to high school, that opportunity for growth is huge. So they're able to get that growth. But the scale scores are still lower relative to the other districts. But again, with COVID comes in, we don't have testing for two years. We still, our scale scores will improve relative to everybody else a little bit, but it's not drastic. And then English Language Arts, just for consistency. So again, the growth here, fabulous. And we're not that far away from the gap. We're performing pretty damn well. We're in the quadrant four, which is fabulous. And then even in, even with the pandemic, we can display exceptional performance. So English Language Arts was going on pretty, pretty well. So that's how the academics were. And then we look at the fiscal year increases, and these are big numbers. So in the current budget, these are really, 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 really big numbers. Right, I, I, I mean, ballpark, we're usually around 500 instead of numbers like this, right?
When the initial budget book spending plan comes out?
For like the towns.
They're probably about 400,000.
Yeah, so it's, these are much bigger numbers. We'll talk about them. So here's the new expenses drivers. So there's teaching positions, specifically, there's eight teaching positions. Six of them are special education, two of them are elementary schools. We're going to need, we've had growth. Last year, we added two from our, we added two kindergartens. So we added two kindergarten teachers and two higher educators. Those are expenses. So as our population grows, those are what we're going to have. The new building comes online, and there's the facility that we stated to the MSBA as part of our acceptance that we would keep it at a certain standard. And our facilities department, Greg Adams at the time, he has a chart. And these two positions help us meet that requirement. If we absolutely don't meet that requirement, I don't know how the process works. We've got new technologists, we have technology, technology support, full-time athletic director. Right now, we have an athletic director. We are one of only two districts that has a .5 athletic director slash .5 assistant. I think we all know, master of acting law trade, master of, you can't, that is not a tenable position for the tribal group, which is not going to do exceptionally well. And we'd also like to start a testing meeting on athletics at middle school as well. Also, special education coordinator, we spent 34% of our budget in special education. And so at the school, we already have coordinators, but they're in teaching positions. So this will be needing three of them to administer a position. And then new curriculum in the classrooms, like I mentioned. We have so many of our teachers are having to do photocopies of materials. Instead of, you know, many of you are accustomed to a child will come home, they have a workbook, or they have problems in there, and they have it. And they can just tear off a page, hand it in, or they hand in the book, and the teacher hands it back. And there's a lot of other things. Actually, we have a new science person that's not going to be a chief of course. That, note on the bottom is very important. We added three positions this year, all of them targeting curriculum. So we added an elementary curriculum coordinator, a secondary curriculum coordinator. And we also added a special education district line coordinator to help with all the transitioning of curriculum to make sure students have a, have a need. These positions, and if you ask the teachers, have a huge impact because they're able to sit there, focus on the data when students take assessments, they just spend their winter assessments. Look at that data and figure, okay, how do we need to pivot and move in order to increase student performance so that they're matched in time? And each teacher is a little bit different in what their needs and what they have to add. None of these are getting paid for out of the money from the three towns. And that's, that's fine right now. We have S R 2 and S R 3 funds that are purposely designed to fill the gap. I would just tell you, check around, just about any district, any district faculty, each building has their own curriculum culture specifically for that reason. This is a completely out of our control. We had two contracts come up. One was for regular transportation, so the yellow buses, the other one was special ed transportation. Those contracts were up, they went out to bid. This is what the cost increase was, the contracts. Not an optimal time to have a contract go out because cost of gas, as you all know, has gone up drastically along with cost of everything else and inflation. So we had those two increases in the transportation funds. We lost $144,000 from the state. That combined puts $583,000. So before we even get into the building, we're already negative from fiscal year 23. And then there's this unknowns that are sitting out there. We don't know the GICP insurance cost. We project 6% in that budget book. We don't know that that's going to come back in. That's March 7.
March 3.
March 3, the date is next to our bid. Enrollment numbers in the kindergarten classes. It could very well be that enrollments aren't, don't mirror last year. And then we're able to take two of our current teachers, just move them to first grade, so we wouldn't need two teachers. We don't know. We won't know that until sometime in the summer. We pushed trying to get the numbers for kindergarten, which is not true. Secondary is class size. So once the scheduling's done, we see where schools are, courses they're taking, that could be another source where we can say, hey, we might be able to find some teachers here that might be able to move to those other positions that we need. So those are potential sources. That we won't have for March 1st. We'll know that, I think it's sometime in the end of March. And that, we have three outstanding contracts as well. Those will not be done before the budget. I think we just started the process on all three. And then there's these perspectives, which I think are really important for everyone to consider. One, there's no way you can look at this and say, hey, let's go ahead, we're going to make it, we're going to catch up, and we're going to get this all done. But that's not going to happen. It would destroy the towns. It would destroy the property. You cannot do that. The towns are paying right now for the new building. That's absolutely true. And all of us who live in the towns, we're paying that. We saw that in our tax. I think it's, that's very, recognize that that is happening and also, also understand that that doesn't help a kindergartner, first grader, second grader, third grader, fourth grader. Number three, now's a bad time. When is there a good time? You've already started here, and I've started here, and you don't have X, Y, and Z. I know. We're not happy about this. When will it be good? So the investments need to be beneficial to the children. And because when they're beneficial to the kids, they're beneficial to the community. This is a, try to think of a way to phrase it. We don't need to win the per people expenditure or net school spending race. We don't need to win that race. We don't have to be the top. If we're at the bottom, we are. If we've got anything, we're cooking on all the stuff, we're good, we're fine. But the data there that I just went through with shows that we're not there. We don't have any control over state funding. And that question about the towns, whether the house rich and cash poor, that's not, that's not our job to decide. That's, that's the people's job to decide whether or not they can afford a lot, what's in the budget. So those are all my share that I have to share. And I just wanted to put that out there because I think it's important. It will be very important in the coming months concerning how we fund our education.
Thanks, Dr. Beattie. Appreciate it. Okay, who would like to get up and speak? Kathy?
Do I have to go near anything, or is it just someone?
Just right up at the table.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Kathleen Castren Ellis from Groveland. I'm a member of the Groveland Board of Selectmen. But we have not actually voted a statement on the budget yet. So I want to be clear that I'm not speaking for my board. Also, in the interest of full disclosure, I'm a teacher in the Whittier Regional School District. So I'm an educator as well. I just wanted to come here tonight because I felt it was critical to give some time. I still have to go to our meeting. But I respect the work that you do. I know you volunteer your time. I know you care deeply about the district. I know Dr. Bartholomew does as well. But this budget, Groveland, I could tell you, there's just no way we can handle this type of an increase in one year. It's just, it's just insurmountable. We could try, as suggested, override, but because the budget is an assessment, it votes up or down at town meeting, we need to know the results of the override prior to a town meeting. We need to know if the money is there or not there. We can't vote. Part of an assessment. So I, we are working really diligently at trimming everything we can in our town budget, which I'm sure our town employees watching this will not be pleased. But we are doing our best. We are going to be fully transparent with you as to our resources and our spending. Anything, any questions you may have about whether or not Groveland has increased anything, feel free to ask us. We'll tell you the truth. We won't lie. I get it, the spending per student, in a perfect world, I'd like to outspend them all too. But this is not that world. And myself personally, having had three children graduate from this school district with an excellent education, fully equipped to pursue three very separate and amazing paths, I think they've come out of here just fantastic, really. I credit the families in the district, but I also credit the school district for encouraging them along the way and for always being there for them, even when the spending per student isn't there, isn't as high. And I think that it's a dangerous game to get too caught up in statistics. And you need to get the full picture, our graduation rate, our college rate, of the students. And you need to get the full picture, our graduation rate, our college rate, of the students that do apply to college, how many are accepted. I think it's probably very high. The choo, ones that choose not to, okay, they follow a different path, that's all fine. I just feel that you need to understand that when home values go up too, in our town, as they have, my house is worth more. It doesn't generate more money for the town. We're still capped at that two and a half percent. And I think that, similar to the building project conversation, which took some time, a conversation about funding education that might need having to extend beyond the two and a half percent cap or find a means to fund more money towards education, needs to begin not with a one-month crunch. You need some time to work on this with the district. And you hope that you will collaborate with us, that you will not put one town in a position of being unable to find the sources for this kind of funding. I mean, you saw last year, we dipped into our reserves, we knew we had to, and we came forward with the money. Okay, we do support education, we do support our schools, but you have a fifty million dollar budget, we have a twenty million dollar budget. Do the math of a ten percent increase on your budget versus ours. Your budget ten percent is much bigger to us than to you, right? So when we start to look to where can we absorb this, it's not there. So I guess what I'm asking is, I'm asking you to consider going back to the drawing boards for a bit and coming to the town to speak with us. I would like to see either our school committee members or contingent from here come to our town and, similar to the building project, have a conversation with us. So that all of the members of my board can ask questions and, and you can ask us questions as well. We'll open up our votes to you, that's not a problem. Thank you very much for your time. I hope you will understand and take this seriously in the limited amount of time that we are here tonight just because we wanna make sure you know what we are very concerned about. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruth Revard, I live in Groveland. And I chair the finance board for the town of Groveland. I've been on the board for seven years now. I have two kids at Kentucky, I have a junior and a senior this year. I very much support education, I appreciate the education they received at Kentucky. But I just, you know, I'm probably going to echo a little bit about what Kathy said, but I just wanted to be clear that we didn't have enough money within our operating budget to fund the assessment that Groveland received last year. We balanced the budget thinking we were going to have that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution from the S R funds, that was reversed. We didn't have the money in our budget. We worked very, very diligently to build our stabilization fund over the seven years I've been on the board. And it was so sad to see us have to dip into it to pay for the school assessment. We couldn't fund it last year. If you level funded our budget this year, we'd be in the same position. But the number I saw in our budget was over a nine percent increase on top of the large assessment we received last year. I wanna do everything we can to support education. I do a lot of work, I do outside work to support education, but, and I, and I was, I very much also supported the building project, I supported the new school. We're doing this to make a nice community, we're doing this to make Groveland and the district a nice place to live. But we can't sacrifice the rest of our town's resources along the way. If this budget were to pass, we would have to, we wouldn't be able to fund our police department. Well, I shouldn't say that. I don't know what it is that we would cut, and I don't know where it is we would cut. But there would be cuts, there would be dramatic changes to our town. And I would hate to think that would happen along the way of building this beautiful new school and creating this educational opportunity for our kids. And then make our town not such a great place to live on top of it because we had to really cut back on our other sources. So I would like to see this as a developing conversation, I would like to work collaboratively. I just need to make sure that everybody here knows how drastically this would impact the town of Groveland. And that we simply don't have the funds for it. You know, if you put a two and a half percent increase, which is what our, you know, the, the limit, the levy limit is, that's less than four hundred thousand dollars. And then our new growth is less than two hundred thousand dollars. And our town is still being faced with the other expenses you talk about, the increase in the retirement funds, the increase in the insurances. We have all of that to contend with, and we're in the middle of doing our budget hearings now. You know, employees want raises, just like your teachers want raises. And we don't have the money for it. And if the school ends up taking that much more of our resources, we're not, we're not gonna be able to pay our employees, our town employees, who are part of our community. And we really need to be able to do that. It's been an ongoing issue, we need to be able to do it, but you just need to understand the impact that this would have. So, and certainly reach out to me if you wanna go any, over any of the other numbers. I'm readily available, always available. Through the town hall, you can get in touch with me, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just what Mr. Baris said, I think is really important. It's called the two hundred fifty thousand to be in books. Cause that was the money that would, were funds that would come in, that would pop, that would be of use, but the town definitely planned to be able to use those. And then they switched up on us after the plan. What did, he, he changed their minds.
August.
No, I just, I was.
I just hope for the summer.
It was horrible, I just.
Here's the right first letter of the month.
And, and then also, I just, it's important to note that, that municipalities along the school districts are all pushing state legislation to fix the adjustments for the cost of inflation. I think they, eight, four percent somewhere around six or change. And it's, we've not seen any of those increases. So there's numerous bills up there, legislation, trying to get that fixed, particularly municipalities who are only seeing a small increase recently. And that common piece that we're seeing particularly in our community, where, best to do it this way, this is how much the state used to give us. And this is how much the towns used to provide. Now, the state's giving us this much, and it's putting bird, bird onto our town. And for us, that means, it's our problem, that's, that's where.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to get up and ask a question, or?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Michael Went, President of the Kentucky Association of Teachers. On behalf of the PAT and as a longstanding member of the Kentucky community, you can take that for what it's worth based on my appearance.
You left?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I want to thank Dr. Bartholomew for sharing the historical financial comparisons between PRSD and other Cal, Dart and neighboring districts at the January eleventh school committee meeting and obviously again this evening. As outlined in this factual data, the increasing rate at which PRSD has fallen behind comparable districts is staggering. For any community member who has not seen it, I'd encourage you to look at even more detail that's on the website that Dr. Bartholomew has shared on the website as well. Kentucky has long been considered the gold standard among local school districts. If you were to go around and talk to people in other communities, they will tell you it's been that way for years. I have teachers who tell me that every day that went to local schools like Newburyport and Amesburg. So it's disheartening to see this standard has deteriorated. As someone who has benefited from Kentucky education and has given back to the district as a teacher-coach, we owe it to our students and our community to reestablish that standard. The school district and our students have historically been what drives our local culture and makes the Kentucky community great. Failure to sustain the educational standards will continue to erode this culture and great community. Dr. Bartholomew has given us a glimpse into how this has already been happening. As we develop and implement the PRSD budget for next year, I urge the leaders and the residents of our three towns to look at the big, long-term picture of this process. Not just the short-term cost to our taxpayers. We will all suffer the consequences long-term if this is not addressed and addressed now. It's an investment in the future of our students and the Kentucky community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, do any school committee members want to ask questions or discuss? Like what do you need? Yeah, what do you need from us, Gary?
I was a little concerned when Selectman Castren Ellis said that they, if it's an override vote, they have to do the vote before they do their budget. Because I don't believe that to be true. As a matter of fact, in the twenty years in Groveland, every override vote I've taken has been after the town meeting. So I'm not sure why she says it has to be done ahead of time. But part of that reason is because we knew that the spending plan, and again, this is not a budget yet, it's a spending plan. It's what superintendent, the department chairs, contracts, things like that, asked for. And then we break it apart and I tell you, this is what I project for revenue, this is what people want, this is our gap. It's only a spending plan. Until the town, until it's approved by the school committee to be sent to the towns and approved in the end, it's not a budget. So I guess what I'm saying is, we knew when we saw these numbers, it wasn't, as the superintendent alluded to earlier, a normal situation. We knew it was going to be an override. There was just no way about it. Before you even knew about it, I informed the towns that this is what's coming, I need for them to understand what was coming. Not the whys, where's and how's, but be prepared, it's coming. Because I couldn't see any way that anybody was going to sit here and say, just get rid of everything. It's going to catch up with us eventually anyways. We're a regional district, Triton, which is another one, all multi, used the two out of three. For the last ten years, we've used a unanimous method, despite of that, what we've done. We just, we could have done what Triton does, if two towns pass it, one town doesn't, tough luck, go find it somewhere else. And if we had been doing that all along, our budget would be far higher than it has been now. I heard Mr. Revard say that their, the towns could build up their stabilization account, this is how they could do it, where the funds came from. And we could accommodate that because we had a declining student population, so as teachers left, we didn't have to replace them. That is now apparent, as the superintendent alluded to. We now, we need, we need to hire more teachers now because our student population's increasing. Groveland and Merrimack have huge 40B projects on the books. If they both come to fruition, this is a way of life for a while. Because taxes those projects take in are gonna be nothing compared to the cost it spends on. It's not even gonna be funny. So I guess what we're talking about here now is, you've heard from them, you've read emails from the Merrimack. Do you want to go forward with this as is? And again, I don't need to know the exact idea of it all, but at the next meeting on the fifteenth, we are going, I'm going to have to vote enough. We're going to have to, because if there is an override, they need to have balance printed and things like that. So what I guess what I'm looking for, we're all looking for from tonight is guidance from the school committee of, what would you like us to do? Is there, do you want to go forward as is? And again, we'll talk to the towns in the meantime, and I'll be happy to sit down with any of them that would like to and go through this. But as the superintendent also alluded to, there's more unknowns are coming into focus as we look at it now. We now know the government budgets, since we wrote this, we now know the bids on the buses, and we now know that the teachers' contracts have been settled, but the other three are still pending. So do you want to go forward with that? Do you want us to come back with a more palatable number? If that's the idea, but again, if you tell me to come back, it's still going to be an override. So I guess that's what I'm kinda looking for. We're all looking for the guidance for the next couple of weeks. What I can work on to get it down to what you want to do normally at this point, as he said, they're four hundred thousand dollars off. I sit down, talk to the towns, they can put a little bit of money here, we can do some adjustments there, and maybe use some one-time revenue here, there. We cherry pick our way down to, nobody needs an override. And it has worked that way for ten years. It can't work that way. The student population increases, it can't go that way. So that's where we are. I'm looking forward, looking for your comments, your opinions, and.
And I don't understand, at the March first meeting, someone recommended, hey, tell us what it would look like if you cut it down, X number of dollars. You would show up and say, hey, there's three different options.
I don't think I heard from the towns that, or the Merrimack, the thing we heard was, if you can get yourself down to a number, we'll be happy to support an override or anything like that. That's not the issue apparently. I get it, we all get it, it's a big number. But again, we need these positions now. Our special ed populations are, are getting bigger. Our student, regular student populations are getting bigger. The bus, buses alone eat up almost all the new money the towns could give us. Are we supposed to start transporting kids? And these, just the inflationary factors are the way of the world and not a good time to be going up the bid and signing contracts in an inflationary environment. But this is what lined up against us.
So I think, Greg, that we definitely need to trim this. I mean, we can't bring into the town that this, this clearly dare not be given again. So I don't know if we have to do more positions, or would I, or would you, you know, decide which one new positions will be there?
Again, we can work and give you scenarios. I think, you know, how we get to whatever it is you want. I don't think, I wanna get into the part of, we're gonna cut two elementary school teachers.
No, I didn't mean it that way. And then cut the new, the stuff that will be needed.
Again, I've sat in on a lot of those meetings, not as many as these guys do. I'm not, I'm saying, you can cut teaching, I'm not sure of these new ones. What I'm saying is, we need those special ed ones. We have just, the population is burgeoning right now, COVID did not help at all. So if you're saying tough positions, it may be that class sizes of the elementary schools go up, or offerings of the middle high school go down. But it won't be not putting the special ed, and I don't see that being cut that way. So it'd be more of a, but I can see what you're saying.
I wasn't saying teachers, I was like, all of the different new positions that we are, I'm looking at, are there some that we would have to, you know, implement this year?
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
I don't wanna cut teachers.
No, 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 I'm not saying that either, nobody wants to do anything like that. But so what I basically hear from you is, okay, we'd like you to get it down. How much? I kinda, I kinda need to know that part of it as well, because I didn't, like I said, I didn't hear from Selectman Castren Ellis or meeting President Revard or the Merrimack thing, that if you could get it down to this, we'd be good. So I guess now it's up to you to decide what you wanna get it down to. Cause I'm, I'm pretty sure it's still gonna be an override vote, unless you're willing to go way into it. Because the other part of all this is, and again, the superintendent alluded to this, if our budget goes up two and a half percent, that's five percent to the towns already because the state's not matching. We have two hundred thousand dollars less than we got last year in the state, so they're not keeping up with their stuff. So it's all shifting to the town. So as I said, our budget's going up six point something percent, but to the towns, you're right, it is ten percent. That's because the state's not kicking in this year anymore. They just, they love giving you the rules, but they don't wanna give you the money to back it up.
Chris, and then Marie.
So I think the, the bigger point that we need to be looking at is not to look at Greg to find money and ways to cut. But I think administration has to come up with some plans as to how we can either trim what's currently in place or trim what is, okay, this is something we really wanted to have, but we could probably may do without that, like, like see some of those cuts. I don't, because of some of the things that have happened to us, the, the transportation is totally the state saying, okay, we are gonna pay you X amount and this amount. Like it has nothing to do with who we're actually transporting. We're supposed to actually get a hundred percent, but that's never happened. So there's certain things, like Greg said, that our hands are tied. And if our income drops and our expenses stay the same, we need to get more from the towns. So I don't know that there's a magic number, but I do think at this point, we as a district really need to look at some of the new things and how can we maybe make do with what we have, or, I don't know, I think there has to be some movement to bring. have, or, I don't know, I think there has to be some movement to bring the budget down. I don't think there's a magic number that gets us there. And I don't think that even if we get down to what we assessed in last year, that, you know, right there, there's issues because of the ESSER issue from last year too, so.
As I recall, even on new positions, we're going to call them, they're still only going to drop, and it doesn't work, they're still only going to drop $200,000 for each town to be, and it's still an override, and they're in still. We're in trouble. Because at that point, when it comes to the teachers that we need to fill, it's just we don't always, if it turns out that we don't have anybody around, we're in trouble. And then, it is, I would not just, it's an option with all of you, I would look at elementary, if we're protecting elementary with fundamental supplies in place, it would be a second level for sure, but we've got to save the classes, just going with the number twice.
Marie?
I agree with what you and Chris had said, and so just on some, Chris, if I've learned anything in my four years here at every budget cycle, I think there's a lot of misconceptions. So I just wanted to clarify that I can tell you that Greg, Dr. B, Mr. Hongley, I know myself and other committee members would have met with the state legislature, would have met with the people who are not, they're just not meeting their commitment. They're supposed to fund, help fund special ed, they're supposed to help fund regional transportation, and that's not happening. And I, before, I just don't want people to misconceive that we're just like, oh, well, they just didn't do it. I'm like, we're having the meetings, we're doing what we can to get that funding, but it's not working. So if parents don't like the budget too, drop your state ramps and your state centers, and they meet with us, they're frustrated 20% too, but I'm just saying, well, where the money comes from? And speak your mind too, because it affects all of us, it affects our community, because then it hits you as a taxpayer, at the local level.
I think that's a good point. I've sat with some of you, me, the senators, you, the state reps, just going over some of these issues again, from the tactic, because I was, we have to hit up the senate, if we don't hold numbers when it comes to the representatives, we're a small community, and in North Shore communities are small communities. And you sort of go up against as large urban districts, they far more votes than we have. We lose that battle with senators where we've tried to have something like a representative act. Now, I think our senate representatives, Senator Zargus, Senator Tarver, they're extremely receptive. There's so many different issues that were brought up with them, specifically about special education costs and how it's all a topic. The entire North Shore superintendent roundtable has had this conversation, brought all the data, and still a little bit. And that's troubling, because everyone feels pinch when it comes to the budget.
Greg?
I'm going to try to do this tactfully as I can.
This will be interesting.
It'll also be a first.
Yeah.
I think you're wasting your time talking to the legislature at this point. I think this is going to be all on us for the foreseeable future, and I don't mean like the next couple of years, I mean like, probably as long as I'm holding breath in the circle. We don't have the, we don't have the votes to update Boston and Cambridge and Land and Low, which is never, and we never will. This is going to fall on us. I mean, transportation down 144,000, you know why it's down 144,000? Because we did what they told us to do, and went to school every other day, so they said our buses weren't totally full, so they cut. I, I mean, we can talk to Senator Tarver, Senator Zargus, and our representatives, till we're blue in the face, and I'm sure they go and advocate for us at the state office. And then Boston, they have 26 members, just go do what they want. And they know it, and they're receptive to us, and they try, but it's not going to matter. It's just not.
Tell them it's not a trial thing?
No, I'm just saying, you can spend all the time you want to talk to them, they're nice guys to talk to, and sometimes things come from them. But unless they're giving a ton of money from the feds that they passed to us like ESSER, the stuff that matters, fully funding regional transportation, a consistent increase in Chapter 70 that's not based upon five bucks a kid or $25 a kid, but actual percentage growth of 2.5% over what they had, then we can start to have conversations about food. But until they're willing to do that, and they come up with these hokey formulas in backrooms, it's just not going to matter.
Fairness to Greg. Three and a half years ago, when I came here, I started trying to have these conversations until they stopped wasting my time. I keep on wasting my time, if I don't, I'll feel like I'm failing, and I will keep on fighting and fighting.
Way to go. So how much is the override now?
The number's 2.6, correct?
Double what?
Double what?
The override?
Total of assessments.
The total increase in assessments? Again, I assume they could do 3% each, when I said, then our budget's off by 1.8 million. But again, how much they actually give us is up to them. It always is. As long as they give us a dollar more than they gave the prior year, that means they've entered, and then they could put, they have to find a way to find out, what we have. How much general fund, how much override, that's up to them. But the general fund part, it could have to be at least what they give.
So I think we really have to go back to the towns and see what they can do? They have to give us the number.
They can see our numbers the same way we can see theirs. I mean, they do 3%. There's excess levy capacity in the three towns, smallest in Roland, middle in Merrimack, and a huge amount in West Newbury, because they've got two school overrides from five, like six and 10 years ago, in their pocket that they never resented. So, I mean, they're like 1.5 million in excess levy capacity, so the number is a choice. The other three towns don't have it in that capacity, so it's going to be an override, but how much of it they want to put towards that, stuff, again, that's their call. But again, I don't think there's any way you're going to get to a point that there's not going to be an override in at least two of the towns. I can't see it, I don't see you're going to get to that point. Not with those significant position cuts. I'm not talking about not just the additions, I'm talking about stuff we already have too. The busing, and the insurance, it's difficult.
That's been high pressure as well. It's just so much, the numbers are so big.
If the override, I mean, to give, to give an example, if they all did their favorite thousand, and we needed 800, 900,000 to say the value, but I'm kidding, too exact, the override would be six.
Okay.
We can go cut 800,000, but the override's still four. I'm not sure if someone going to a voting group matters whether it's four, five, or six, they're either going to kind of be a yes or a no unless it gets to something catastrophic, I'm not sure what that breakdown is. And you never know until the election day, though. So I guess, again, we go back to, we will go back and take a look and see what we can cut out of it, but I don't think we're ever going to cut it out to the point without significantly impacting the district going to vote, and there's no override.
Emily?
So if we, sorry, it's hard to find words. Like, if this isn't tenable for the towns, even like for partners of what we can do and still run a school district? Like, how do we?
As I said, we've gotten lucky because we've had staff production put out there.
And I get that, like, I under, I mean, I understand the Chapter 70, I understand every, like, all of it, but how do we, there's, like, I know of, all the other small regional school districts in the state are dealing with these problems, like, how can we fix it? I feel like we're talking about a lot of the things that we can't do, and I am not the finance person, and, and I mean, you have done magic, so I'm not just asking you, but like, what can, what can we do? What can we do?
Again, I gotta go back to the statement I made before, the state is not your partner anymore.
Right, and I get that, but like...
This all falls on the community, so the question becomes, what do the community want to do?
Have to start, you have to zero and start this, okay, this is what we are like, you know, the contract, here's, you know, here's what we care, and build from there, and, I mean, because we can't keep doing this. We can't, I mean, not just because, well, it's really unpleasant, but because we run a school district, that's why all of us are sitting here anyway, so, like, we've got to find a way to fix it, and if that means we're asking for overrides, that's fine, but if that's only a stop, to me, that seems like that's just a stopgap measure, right?
You know what I'm saying right now, is with the building going on in the three towns, the 40B project being fulfilled, what you're seeing right now is the way of the future.
Right.
The state's not going to help you, so it's going to be override after override after override after override, as long as the population keeps coming in, the state's not kicking in.
So there's no way that we can, well, the towns are saying, I'm sorry, no, I just, I don't, I feel like I must be missing something, because...
Well, the towns are saying they can't afford it, so...
Of course not.
Chris?
So I'll say, at some point, right, in terms of finding out what towns find tenable, at some point it just comes down to asking the voters, which it certainly sounds like we're heading in that direction, is that they're going to decide for themselves. Even with cuts, it's a budget we're heading in direction of something that's going to be in front of them to decide how they want to fund the schools. And the one thing I'll say about that as we move forward in this, it could add to be a little bit tonight, as we talk about this, and I know this is probably greenland, but part of the budget process every year is that it's a little bit adversarial, as we, me as the side, the school side, we argue over money, like, what Francis Frayfle achieved tonight, I don't remember who he said, but schools taking our resources. I would just encourage everybody to think about this a little more collectively than that, right? Adequately funding, community adequately funding schools is not schools taking the community's resources. Schools are your community, your community is your schools. Things that happen on the school side affect really, that happens on the community side, and if it happens on the community side, affects what happens on the school side. And I know how eager Dr. Mead and Greg are to talk with towns about these things and work this out, in my limited time with the community, they've been extremely conscientious about thinking about town circumstances as they move forward, and I know they'll continue to do that, and I would encourage everybody to think, again...
Can you talk about a lot of things? I can't hear anything anyone's saying, I'm sorry, it burst out, but I can't hear anything. We haven't been able to hear you this whole time.
Does anyone have anything else to add? Greg?
Well, it seems that our biggest challenge is, there's no way to turn around in the tunnel, we're going to have to ask for an override, whether it's a lower override, medium override, or a high-priced override. I'm just telling you that the people who I've talked with in Roland are not, I have not met one single person in favor of any override, so I guess my question is, if there is, if the towns, whether it's two or it's all three, say, no override, what happens next?
What happens next? Then you have no budget, and you start over again. And you have to submit a different budget that has to be lower than the one you see as the due in the first place. So you could cut the budget $100, resend it back to the towns, and they start the override vote all over again. Or you say, okay, if you don't want to pay for it, this is what the result would be, class sizes are 40 in the first grade, and that's what you present, and then suddenly they come and say, well, we'll give you some money now. That's happened, that happened about 15 or 16 years ago, I don't remember that one. But, so I guess, I guess, but what you pointed was kind of interesting to me, is do you want this presented to go forward? Do you want us to cut money to get down what you think is a smaller override, or a medium override? At least that's some guidance we can work on. I mean, I don't expect to come up with a number tonight, but that kind of guidance would be helpful.
I just want, like, if we're moving in that direction, I want to make sure it is clearly, I've heard what you said, we're going to have to do this going forward, but I'd like to see something that at least is setting us up for like, something that is sustainable, not the right word, but like, that is setting us up for success in the areas that we care the most about. You know, so if that means we're not caring, I can't think of anything that I don't care about, but if there's something that we did care about as much.
Yeah, I mean, just, just for what I said in that presentation, all those three positions we added, those positions should never go away, funded the ESSER, that's a quarter million dollars going to pop up somewhere, once they're no longer on the horizon. And losing those positions would be devastating. They're not classroom teachers, but they're the folks who go in and help classrooms. So it's, it's things like that we've, so it's things like that we've gone through, tried to find ways to just not throw everything at once, just to say, hey, well, I think we have three, we have three years, these are the positions we have to start adding in. And that goes back to the whole thing, you can't try to fix this in one fell swoop. And it's crazy to think about, those numbers put up there is not one fell swoop, because it sure does look like it, it certainly does feel like it. But I, I would agree, it is that question, let's decide with the override, it's not a question of, can we avoid the override? We can, if we avoid the override, we can sit down and do that, and it's a guarantee in class size, and in secondary.
That happens a lot, I mean, we, probably the last five years, I've seen it, when the school committees will do those ridiculous, and I'm going to say that word out loud, threats like, fine, we just cancel all athletics. I mean, that, you don't want to, I'm doing that, that's like a no thought, me against you type of mentality, and that stuff's never going to work. It just shows you the petty, and we're never going to be like that, and I hope to God we never get like that. But it'll be a thoughtful review to get to some, like you said, go forward with this, cut it back a lot, or try to find some middle grounds. That, that alone will give us at least a place to go.
We can put all three scenarios together and say, here's...
I'll do the first one, although we don't do anything. There you go.
I mean, I would like to see what a middle ground would look like. I, I...
And even a low ground.
Right, look, I mean, I work in a school, I know what these, like, I...
Yeah, well, that's true, I mean...
I can't ask you to go to the low ground, because I already, I know, I've heard that these people are working to get here every day, to meet social, emotional, and academic needs of these kids, I can't even, like, I can barely talk about it without... So I can't ask you to do that, because I know the impact it has on the teachers, and therefore the impact on our schools. But I do think there's got to be something more than...
There are calls, like I said, you always make calls, we've done it, on that day, the day you approve your budget, every year, remember the little sheets I throw up? This is what I'm saying, remember this year was like, okay, to get where we need to go, we're not going to fix the middle high school anymore, because we're going to tear them down anyways. That's why you see holes in ceilings and stuff, and they're slowly falling apart for the year, but we got decided that's the way to go. It may, you know, tough with the kids walking around now, but they'll get through it. We, the last place superintendent would ever let me go is the kids' education. And I'm well aware of that, so I wouldn't even come in there with this hell sick, that hell scenario of, you know, massive class sizes and all that, my step at first, I would never do that. So I'd go through it, try to look at everything around the margins I could, and any suppositions I could make, and any, sometimes like we do here, bets, I'll bet we can get through this this year. You know, and if we don't, do I have someplace else I can fall back? You know, it'll be like that. And I'll create those sheets with the superintendent, this is the superintendent, with the department chairs and things, and we'll give you those sheets. This is what we would do in this scenario, this scenario, this scenario.
There are much more.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go, Greg.
Yeah, we got three, I was looking for one.
We got to make any changes.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, at this time, public comment about Warren Santaque?
Would you guys like to move here?
Yeah, just right up in front of the thingy, bud.
Okay.
I think this camera is focused on the public comment.
I'm not sure everybody can hear me, because all I can say is, before I get started, I cannot imagine my children going to school every single day and trying to learn, listening to people talk through math. I have no idea what you all just said over the course of the last hour, and I was trying to listen without distraction. So let me just say that before I get started. Knowing that you all have a vote, to rescind the current mandate that's on the agenda for tonight, I will skip right to the good part. The last two years were hard for everyone. There was so much that was unknown, and fear about worst-case scenarios was literally thrown at us from what felt like every single direction. But now we find ourselves in a very different place. At this point in time, every person over the age of five has had and will continue to have ample opportunity to get vaccinated if they so wish to. Research has now shown that children ages five through 18, just going to use that number because that's what we're talking about here, right, are not transmitting... Are not transmitting the virus at high rates, nor are we seeing large numbers of children in the same age group having serious complications from the virus itself. But what we are seeing is severe developmental impact, emotionally, mentally, socially, verbally, all because we have forced and continue to mandate that our children wear masks over the very parts of their faces that they use to express themselves and communicate with others every single day. Imagine being a six-year-old like my son, who's in first grade. He learns from the social cues of those around him, and he has never seen his teacher or his friends smile at him during school. To me, that is horrifying. The logic surrounding mask mandates perhaps made sense when so much about this virus was unknown. Plain and simple, it no longer makes sense. It makes zero sense why a healthy asymptomatic child should ever have to put a mask over their face for seven hours a day. I don't know if you all watched the Super Bowl? I did. What I saw, a stadium, an indoor stadium with 70,000 people, and I did not see one person with a mask on, and I watched the entire game. And yet, less than 12 hours later, there we were, sending our kids and their masks off to school, because the only people still being affected by this mandate are our children. I ask you all to put aside your personal beliefs, and I urge you to follow the science and facts about masking. They speak volumes. Every day you get the choice as an adult to decide whether or not you wear a mask when you leave your house. We can go to dinner at other public places without masks. We see cities and towns dropping in mask mandates and vaccine mandates for indoor spaces every single day. We would simply like that same right, the right to choose for our kids. I would like to acknowledge that you, the school committee, you were elected to play an important role in advocating for our students and for the district. We, as parents, play an even more important role, the role to decide what is best for our own children. When that role gets taken away, as it has over the past year, it is a very slippery slope. We come to you tonight to ask you to rescind the current mandate and to give us the choice about whether or not our children wear masks back to the parents now and moving forward. We know our kids best. We are their moms and their dads, we have seen their struggles firsthand over the past two years, and we, and only we, are the ones in the best position to make this decision for them. They've been isolated, they've been sent back to school to learn in extreme conditions, they hate these masks, by the way, and they've been used as political pawns during the most important developmental years of their life. It needs to end now. Masks optional for all, no discrimination, effective 228, please, I am begging you, now forevermore, thank you.
Hannah, you're up next.
I have just worked my into my speech. That's not done.
You're going to work at the student's?
Yeah. Okay.
Next up is Joel Mavolafly.
We can't, we can't hear you, and you keep laughing.
You can't hear me. Hard to follow that, because she took most of my talking points. Um, it's all good. I chose to have kids late in life, I'm one of those old dads, I was blessed with twins at 41 years old that are now seven. Everyone thinks about twins, and they go, oh, you know, they're the same kid, basically. In fact, they're not. I discipline them different, I reward them different, I treat them different in all aspects of their life, because that's what it demands. What I'm getting at is, there's no broad brush that I can utilize to parent those two kids. In the same way, I look at these just ridiculous rules that you guys had nothing to do with, I acknowledge that, but you have the chance to undo that broad brush. My kids have never had a crumb of fast food, they've never had a drop of soda, they spend almost no time playing video games, well, they spend no time, not any. They watch very little TV, my wife keeps them outside way more hours than they should be, and they're very active. And that's because it's what we think is best for our kids, because we know what's best for our kids. We look at things, or we've heard things about long haul, that's a term we've all heard so much over the last year and a half, long haul COVID, and all this speculation about what's coming down the train, well, she rattled off your stats about, you know, how successful they are getting better. You know what has long haul? Sugar. Too much TV, fatty foods. Y'all don't mandate that, and nor should you. It should be left to every parent to decide whether or not they want their kid to eat dinner at McDonald's, or sit down and watch the TV and leave them alone. And that's their right, that's our right, that's your right. And you now have a chance to just say, hey, you know something? Let's put it back in the parents' hands. Let's just not do what the state did, what the federal did, what everybody else is doing, and take away from their rights as parents, as individuals. And lastly, you guys clearly have a ton of stuff to stress about, as we just listened to the last hour. Take this off your lap, man. Undo it, it's an easy one, it's a no-brainer. Like she said, there are ways for those who want this stuff to look out for their best interests and move forward, and for the rest of us to be able to do it the same way we feel is best. And then you guys can just focus on what you really should be focusing on, curriculum, budgets, God help you. All the stuff that, just an hour of, just, I can see, y'all just sweating, and then there's no good answer. There is an answer here. The answer is, let the parents decide for what they think is best, and you guys work on what you need to work on, and hope that we show the same level of energy and desire to help you with that as well, all right? So, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Mavolafly. We have Jeff Nanaskalko here.
He's up, he's up to me.
No, he's not coming. Uh, okay, and lastly, we have Diane, Diana Walsh.
Is it Deborah Walsh?
Deborah Walsh, I'm sorry, maybe?
Yes.
Sorry, I don't know.
I can't hear you, is it Deborah Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. I can't hear you. You have your kids in school?
All right.
All right, I don't know if I speak to you. All right, my name is Deborah Walsh, I live in Groveland, I have three children. We want masks optional. I won't bother you with science or facts, because we all know you don't care about that. We no longer trust the school board members to make educational or well-being decisions for our children, except for Ashley and Richard. Thank you. You have discredited yourself by the policies you have made over the last 18 months. We want masks optional. We want a policy implemented that going forward, it must always be mask optional with no exceptions. This should never happen again, you should all be ashamed of yourselves. We live in this community, we have seen you outside the, the school buildings, we have seen you without your mask, and your blatant hypocrisy, it is disgraceful. We want masks optional, we want it now, and we want it always.
Okay, superintendent news.
Thank you.
Jane?
Her, I'll tell her over to, you got a hand? Pop her hair, and she can go, she's a student.
Um, all right, I'll just go over things kind of a little bit, I'm pretty happy so far. We need some lightness. Um, well, one thing I want to say is that February break is almost here, so we have, well, kids have two Mondays, sorry, you guys have Friday. So we're kind of just cramming in the rest of the week to get to February break, so everyone's pretty happy to have that week off. And then also, one thing I want to mention was that a lot of kids have seemed to be happy about having more involvement in the school community regarding masks and the new mascot. There were surveys sent out, not only to parents and teachers, but also to students, and I can't remember many other things that we've gotten surveys about that kids have, like, been kind of excited to answer. So like, I mean, like, I answer everything, but like, seeing kids that, like, don't really care about this stuff, like, the answer is kind of cool to see. So I think that it's really nice to see a much broader spectrum of answers, and it started a lot of conversations at school, too, like, even like something like the mascot seemed kind of funny, we were talking about like pelicans or something, but it's nice to hear everyone throwing out their ideas, getting everyone to be heard. And then also, oh, I just want to talk about sports. The girls' track team just won cows last week, not to toot my own horn, but, and then the girls' basketball team also won cows, and then our swim team with Treyon won cows too, so we're on a roll. So the track team will be going to the divisional meet on Thursday, and then basketball's continuing off the tournament, all good things. And then one thing that I wanted to bring a little attention to was, maybe not something that everyone knows, it's a group that I do, it's called DECA, and we call it business team, that's roughly what it is, no one really has any idea what it is. Mostly because we don't have any DECA classes, so mainly this program runs as like a high school course, but we don't have the resources or the money really to do that now, so we run it as after-school club. So I've done this all four years, I've spent hours writing research papers and making projects, and it's just kind of a good way to build skills that you use in the real world, that are kind of like business-oriented. So we started it when I was a freshman, so this is our fourth year now, this will be our last year, and I just wanted to kind of note that this year is the largest student group it's ever been, and we've also had the most kids qualify for the state competition this year. We have, actually, we have the chance for, I think we have about 20 kids, so we have the chance for all 20 of those kids to go to the competition in Boston in the middle of March. And usually what happens is you go to Boston and you get to stay over for two nights in a hotel. So we were allowed to do this one year, and then one year we weren't, so we took a bus to Boston and back six times in the span of two and a half days. So we probably got maybe four or five hours of sleep a night, and then we were expected to do our presentations, running on no energy, and it's just not upon experience when you don't get to stay over. So this year, we're asking, just for the community's support, I think, in being allowed to stay over, we're still kind of working out some details on whether we'll be able to or not, but I kind of just wanted to note that this is something that's really important to me, and I think it should be really important to everyone else, too, and I just kind of want to make it known that it's a really beneficial program, and I think we should probably shed a little more light on it, so, thanks.
Thanks, Hannah.
Thanks, Hannah, and just, school committee, DECA, that's correct, they do DECA competitions, typically you see those schools that focus on career and technical education, they have all, a lot of those schools have DECA programs, it's, there are competitions for students who have to do all sorts of different challenges, right there on the lawn, sometimes it's prep and dance, so the nights before, where she's talking about four hours, even if you're in a hotel, you get a small amount of time, because they're working with their partners about how they're going to pitch, and there's judges that sit there and they evaluate what you were, what they're being told, and they, your freshman year was the first year?
Yeah, that was the first year, and there were five of us.
Right, and then it's, and she's mentioned the numbers got bigger and bigger, and we won, but there's been, so eight boys comes out.
Yeah, I actually went to the national competition last year, so...
Yeah, that's, so it's come along, along with, so ultimately what you're asking is when the, when it comes to permission to, if it comes up to permission to stay...
We're, we're on that time right now.
So when we, you know, when it gets to us...
Before. Yeah.
Okay. So thank you for that, I appreciate it. So just along those lines, the principals have sent us some information we've shared. One, over a page, they have a hundred-day school, and in our hundred-day school, they ask children to bring in cans for Pet and Yolos, Salisbury, they're actually, they bring 180 cans, a hundred-day school, Pet and Yolos are very happy to have those, and very proud of our students for doing that. At the high school, there's a scholastic art award, Julia Spalding had a painting called Bird of the Bubble, and she received a gold key, and she's going to be considered a national level competition. And Cindy Pichette also had artwork, received an honorable mention, and that was for the Women Empowerment in the media. Ryan Shears, if you might remember him, he was out there on Twitter earlier in the fall, that's, he's done some great artwork as well, he got a Vee's Choice Award in the 2022, he won a Starlet, a merge, a young artist exhibit, and out of 656 submissions, his was selected as top, and he also received a sculpture. We have students, so Latin students, several Latin students received a gold medal, silver medal, and bronze medal, as their recognition for the National Classic Anthropology Exam. So Al Winteski, Kate LaMeo, Kate Drislin, Yadi Karol Kors, Elizabeth Murphy, and Strat Seymour all received recognitions. Hannah mentioned already, well, the athletics, and also last week, Peter Art students, they had written those ten-minute plays as part of capstone of their work, they did ten-minute plays, and that political performance, third in the 11th, it's a pretty cool opportunity for them to be elevated in front of students. Finally, Spencer May, he was accepted to the 2021 MMPE All-State Festival, and he was five, one of five trumpet players, as Goinsio performed in the state, and he's going to be able to perform in Boston Symphony Hall on March 5th. So outside of school news, I do this all the time, the COVID dashboard, you can go click on it, but again, the numbers for February are way different, because the clues, they have not, no confirmation, so if that were the case, the numbers in January, December will be much, much higher. Even with that, there's a pretty significant, there's a decline, week by week, which is still received across the board. Also, last week, I met with the sheriffs, I'm sorry, leads chiefs of the three towns, we had a meeting, just developed our standard response protocol that we're going to be implementing starting next year. We all have protocols already, but there's some verbiage and words that we want to make sure we use consistently, so we're going to adopt the I love you guys standard response protocol. It's a protocol that was designed by parents, it incorporates everything the RUs, it has some additional layers, but again, it's a focus on keeping the kids safe. In addition to that, we all agreed that we would move forward with the teaching the avoid, deny, defend approach in certain situations, obviously, that's a pretty level appropriate. Finally, I know we're going to be talking about this in a second, but just, I, I, if you did not receive it, just the results of the survey regarding the mask, so Hannah mentioned the students, so we had 745 students, which is a really high response rate of students, and that was 74.4% of the students asking that masks be made optional, and the staff, there was 59.8% of staff asking that masks be optional, and the parents was 73.6% of the parents asking, so that was overwhelmingly the majority that was done on masks. Of course, I think that this was a lot of what it was, too, we were all aware that this was an opportunity that came up, because DSC was decided they're going to lead up to the voting decision, so tonight, Joe Bead decided that whether or not we continue to follow DSC's guidance on February 28th or whatever. And that's all I have.
Great, so why don't we just get right to it, mask mandate change. Does anyone want to put in a motion, or?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Regarding the mask mandate change, I see this as a three-section vote, and I'd like to separate these accordingly. The policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee, that's policy M, which we're, which we will eventually put in to vote, so that parents have the choice of what their kids wear or don't wear. The second one, I probably have a problem with the federal requirement, wearing a mask while on the bus is still in the place, I don't put much strings into the federal So I don't put much credence into the federal government. We have an administration that had a disastrous exit from Afghanistan. Left $85 billion worth of military equipment and left hundreds of Americans behind. Allows over a hundred, over a million illegals, unvetted and unvaccinated instead of a legal port of entry. Now, that lack of wisdom comes from DC. So I would be voting no for the federal requirement of wearing a mask. I would rather pass that on to the parents. The third, the third question is masking.
I'm sorry, but point of order, you're not, you're kind of getting off the topic.
Oh, I, I think I'm dead on the topic in two and a half years. Number three, masking for five days when someone returns after having tested positive. I think our health officials are probably in agreement with that and I would not counter that. But I would be voting yes on one and three and voting no on two. And if we make them all one vote, I'll have to abstain. But I'd like it to be in the record that I'm voting in favor of parents after two and a half years. And we should have done this two and a half years ago. Let the parents decide what's good for their kids.
Chris. So I'm going to actually follow the actual way that we're supposed to make a motion and say, I make a motion to rescind policy M with the exception of any federal or state requirements regarding the wearing of masks. In other words, on buses and returning to school after testing positive for COVID and allowing the wearing of masks in school buildings to be optional.
Second. Have a second.
Yes. So like if we're making this decision, like and then we're going to come back for a break, like is there any like mention to that?
We have to make the motion and then we'll discuss it.
So I just kind of clarification because I've heard this in other schools.
Can you speak up?
Yeah.
Can you get off your mask?
Teacher voice.
Nope.
Nope.
No. But.
You can move up as well.
Yeah.
You can sit right at the front row.
You can get hearing aids. You can go away from the hearing.
Really? Hearing aids?
Go ahead.
I understand the part about the buses is a federal mandate. And my understanding is that children also will have to wear their masks in the nurse's office as with doctors' offices and all other medical. But that, is that also still true?
Actually, I don't know the answer. I don't, I don't think that's a conclusion. But if someone's presumed to be ill.
Very.
Chris. I don't know if I can make an amendment on my own motion, but to say in accordance with the February 28th deadline that the state has recommended.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to point out that you're always making statements saying to be respectful when others are speaking. And Dick's trying to speak and a lot of you are laughing and speaking at the same. You're the one who was saying you need to be respectful. So you're respectful.
I don't think people are very respectful tonight. Can we go with Murray?
I'm hearing any comments.
After what you said to us.
As far as respect goes, it works both ways. It's been a long time. And in two years, we've seen a whole lot of it from a lot of people. Number two, we go to school committee training. Believe it or not, we get, we do this all volunteer basis, but we also do go to training for this. And we are taught to stay on topic. And to bring in political agendas, that's not on topic. Our topic here tonight is regarding masks for the children. It is regarding masks on school, that's, which we have no say in. That's the federal law. We don't, we don't have any choice in that.
You have a say here.
We don't. It's the federal law, the school.
No, it's mandatory.
You need to, you need to help laws work and help it put down.
Has there not been?
Chris. So I actually am, the reason that I'm making this motion is because the health directors in the towns, our district physician, and the state have all said that this is the step that we are ready to take in this whole pandemic. So that's why I have changed my mind from back in August when we had to make this vote. That, that I think that it is time because I think all those, all that information points us in this direction.
Would anyone else like to mention it? All in favor of removing the mask mandate and following the 28th February? And making it optional?
Optional.
The motion to rescind policy M and continue to follow DESI's guideline, the guidance making it optional for parents to decide for their children.
I read the, the motion that was in our packet and then I just admitted it to be as of February 28th.
He changed the motion earlier. Okay. All right. So the motion is in the packet.
Just because it follows whatever else.
I will read it as a motion to rescind policy M with the exception of any federal or state requirements regarding the wearing of masks on buses and returning to school after testing positive for COVID and allowing the wearing of masks in school buildings to be optional starting February 28th. All in favor? And you're abstaining?
I'm abstaining, but I'm agreeing with the, the deletion that you're talking about. I'm, I'm not, and the reason I mentioned the wisdom or lack of wisdom is we have been fooled by scientists, not science. And it's been very, very political. And if anyone doesn't think that this has been more political at our kids' expense. 51% increase in teenage suicide with females leading in that category. 300% increase in speech referrals. This, what this nation has done with this pandemic is despicable. And that's why I mentioned the other thing regarding the lack of wisdom that I'm seeing in DC.
I understand that. Moving on, the motion passes. Moving on.
Amen.
All right. Chris. I would like to make a motion to approve Chip O'Connor's for another term on the Whittier. We have no hope he has a school. Thank you, Chip, for your.
Any discussions about the Whittier appointment? All in favor? Thank you. Okay. This will be your 23 calendar.
So, Patrick. Sure, go ahead.
The Schmittles and all that. You just put the order of the date. One of the 13 early release dates when I was looking at earlier was after the holiday weekend. Other than the date order, but that wasn't.
I'm sorry. What was that?
Basically, in the September, since the 23rd early release date, the number is on, is at the end. And then before it, or the 26th and 27th really holiday tonight.
Oh. So it's just a four.
Okay. So the proposed calendar for the district, this will be 23, reflects the labor start date after Labor Day and new agreements for PRSD and PUD regarding parent teacher conferences. It also reflects the 3TD days to start year and the 4TD day on Tuesday of our page, which is stated by the Russian. Does anyone have any questions?
Chris has an idea. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say I'm really glad that we're doing it as a professional day, not as for the teachers because I know there are certain things for specialists that are like conference that happens on that day that will target people who often get ignored.
If you recall, we tried to do this a couple of years ago.
I'm just saying.
But those opportunities for election days went away because of the circumstances. And we look forward to collaborating with our neighborhood, neighboring districts on some of those specialized groups.
I just know that our specialists love that because they actually get like.
It's also very big benefit to now America, particularly in the streets or as a whole.
Chris. Just, I mentioned this to Brent before, so I wanted to bring it up in public. With regard to typically we have orientation day for ninth graders, seventh graders. I know that there's a, a amount of orientation that the new building is going to be for everybody. But I especially feel that we really need to make a concerted effort for seventh graders. I mean, this is their first time in, just a big school, but an enormous school. So really keeping them in mind and hopefully the transition into the building goes very well. And, but I think parents need to have those dates as soon as possible, even if they're timed a bit.
And those might come later than sooner. It's all going to be about the timing of the quality of access.
But even if we put dates that had to be moved, pushed back. For parents to know.
For a moment.
A bunch of different.
Yeah, we discussed multiple sort of variations of how we'll do orientation in the new building. Because as you alluded to, it's not typically we do orientation for seventh and ninth graders. Well, all students are going to need orientation now. And, and we can't necessarily rely on our 12th graders to do the orientation and tours. They're going to need it themselves. So we are working with a couple of different options of what that might look like. And some of it, we may have to play by ear well into the early August before we know for sure what we might be able to do for kids. We'd love to be able to do tours prior to, you know, everyone returning. We just don't know if that's a reasonable thing. And if we can do tours and you don't, you don't have to build that into orientation and you can think about orientation differently. So those are things we're going to have to have play out. But I understand what you're saying about seventh graders in particular. There may be a greater level of angst among those kids and parents coming into the bigger building.
Chris. Well, so as a follow up, I think seventh graders, this is the first time they'll be switching for every single class. This is the first time they have split lunch. Like, so I think at a minimum, I still think we need to have kind of the old school type of experience for seventh graders to really acclimate them to high school, middle school, high school. I mean, I, I just think that's going to be a big transition for them.
Wayne, do you have a question? Oh, Joanna, sorry.
This was just something really minor. When I first, I was curious if anybody else got confused about this. When I first read through the calendar and I saw religious holidays, I was actually thinking it meant there was no school those days. And then I reread it. I'm like, oh, religious holiday, no homework or tests. But I was a little, like when I, at first glance, I actually thought there was no school on those days. We're moving to that. So I don't know if there's a way to make clear. I don't know that needs to be made clear because I did figure it out, but just what I saw on the first time I read it.
We'll look at it and see if there's a different way to word it.
Yeah, I paused it back too. And I wondered if you just put no school first.
Yeah.
So there is school.
No homework first, so that that's like what is the first thing you see.
Got it.
Understand the law.
Yep. That makes sense.
So do we move your motion? All in favor of the calendar for February 23rd?
I don't think I ever made that motion. I make a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Second.
All right. All in favor.
I didn't think we did, but I could have. I wonder why.
Hi. Last but not least, the ESSA transportation reimbursement. Is that you? Okay.
I know there was a link to this in the packet. But it basically is, is they're asking the school committee to approve this memorandum of understanding, which the state is asking, really all the school districts to do, that should you have any homeless transportation that may be eligible for reimbursement on the title four, that the state can get some additional money and then pass it through to us. I believe last year we spent $13,000. Most of you, we don't spend anything. We weren't really going to participate in this, but they followed up and begged us to do it. So I said, fine, we'll do it. If we did get the reimbursement for it, it's a small percentage of that. It'd probably be like 2,400 bucks or something, of which then someone else takes a cut from all the paperwork. So again, it's kind of, we're doing this as a kind of a favor to the state that I aligned earlier. So if you could vote to approve the memorandum of understanding, then I can submit it on to them. And hopefully, other than doing paperwork once a year for if we have any homeless transportation, we'll never hear from this again.
Does someone like to reach motion?
So vote.
All in favor? Fabulous. Motion to adjourn. All, all in favor? Thanks, Deborah. Thank you.